It's seven o'clock. At this time, I'd like to call the Crystal City Council meeting to order. Let's start with roll call.
Councilmember Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Banks.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Duschl.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
And Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, we have an agenda before us. Looking for a motion on that agenda? Nancy?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Brendan?
I second that motion.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda tonight is, I'll read that into the record at this time, approval of the minutes from the following meetings. The city council work session on November 14th, and then there was a special council meeting on that same, or on November 19th, and there was a regular council meeting the same night, and then a work session again that same night on the 19th. Those are our minutes before us. Next item is the approval of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council. That list is on file in city clerk's office. Approval of a resolution accepting the following donations: $1,000 from the Crystal Lions for the 2020 Frolics, and $3,000 from West Metro Fire Rescue Relief Associations for the 2020 Crystal Frolics as well. And then, an approval of a resolution making an annual insurance election, and then an approval of a resolution authorizing Crystal Lake Trail Agreement with the Three Rivers Park District, and then approval of a resolution authorizing the transfer of ownership of the Highway 100 Preston Bridge to the Three Rivers, the Three Rivers Park District, and then approval of a resolution authorizing stormwater agreement with Twin Lakes North Condominium Association. Those are roughly, roughly our consent agenda. Looking for a motion? Brendan?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Nancy?
I'll second. Just a question on the trail.
Did you want to pull something from the agenda?
Nope. Nope, just a question, just a...
Let's do the vote quick, so it's technically correct.
Sure.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. What's your question?
The question was on the Crystal Lake Regional Trail, and maybe Mark could answer this. If a property owner has an issue with maintenance along the trail, or a question, who would they go through? Would they go through us first, or go directly?
I would just encourage them to reach out to the city, and we'll connect them with the right people.
Perfect.
At three years.
Okay, thank you.
Cool. John?
And Mark, I have a follow-up question. So, with the pedestrian bridge, we've always paid for the electricity, for the lights. Is that going to continue?
No, it is not.
It is not?
Ask that along as well.
Awesome.
Giving mood.
Good deal. Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll have open forum. This is separate from the proposed public hearing regarding property tax and housing re, or, excuse me, the truth in lending public hearing. Anybody here wishing to speak during open forum, something other than taxes? Seeing nobody approach, we will skip by, oh, nope, not including taxes. Not including taxes. All right. Next, we will receive comment regarding the 2020 budget and the 2020 proposed tax and housing and redevelopment authority levies. Jean McGann is here to address the council. She is our financial director. Welcome, Jean.
Thank you. Mayor and council, as you've mentioned, we're here to talk about the 2020 budget and property tax levy. Developing a budget is a year-long process that continues throughout the year. Beginning in April, May, the council does provide direction based on goals and initiatives for the city. Following this, the process continues with a series of work sessions to review proposals and discuss alternatives. In September of this year, the city council did adopt a preliminary property tax levy and budget, and in October, there was a public input meeting held. Tonight, we'll review components of the budget and, of course, provide the opportunity for public comment. After the city council meeting this evening, the council will hold another work session to further discuss the budget, and then later in December, the city council will approve the property tax budget and levy. The council goals for, right now, are to create a thriving business community, develop fiscally sound financial policies and practices, and communicate those policies to the community, to create strong neighborhoods, and build inclusive communities so that all feel welcome. A few changes that happened in the 2019 legislative session this year. First off, there are no levy limits for 2020. The local government aid, or LGA allotment, remains stable when you compare that to 2018. There are some new regulations that specify that the 5% retainage held on contracts must be paid out within 60 days of substantial completion of that project, and there are some very limited exceptions. And, effective on July 1st of 2019, employees returning to work after discharge from military service may be eligible to purchase service credits, and then the city would pay into PERA, or the Public Retirement Association, amounts it would have contributed during that service period itself. Now, as we get into the actual levy summary, by now residents have received their preliminary property tax statements, and so, one item to note is that tonight, we are talking about the overall property tax levy and budget, and if people are concerned about market values. Market values is a separate process in which each year, you will receive a valuation statement from the county, long about March 1st, and then in April, there is an open book meeting. If you do, once you do receive those valuation notices, you'll want to look carefully at the instructions, as it will provide direction as to how to appeal any valuation changes. As I mentioned before, the city council is still working through the overall property tax levy and the 2020 budget. When the preliminary property tax statements went out, we had an approximate 17.59% preliminary levy increase, and the council has, will be making reductions, so that the final levy will be reduced to approximately 9%. 9.03% is really the target that we're going for, and there will be additional discussions on this. So as people look at their overall property tax statements, you could assume since we'll be going from 17.59% to approximately 9%, that the increases for the city portion of your overall property tax bill will ultimately almost be cut in half. Now, of course, if people have made improvements to their home, you may see different increases due to that as well. Now, we are going to show a short video, which indicate how property taxes work. Do you have it? Thank you. As long as governments have existed, going back thousands of years, so have taxes. By definition, a tax is a charge or levy, money in this day and age, collected by the government from people or businesses for public use. Examples include the income tax, sales tax, and property tax. The money's used to pay for police protection, roads and bridges, human services, and more. In Minnesota, the property tax is collected on the property owned by a person or business. Decisions made by government have a big impact on your property taxes, whether it be decisionally at the local, state, or federal level. The term "local government" refers to your city, county, school district, and any other entities that have been given taxing authority by law. If you take a look at your property tax notification or statement, you'll see that it lists a whole host of taxing authorities. The county sends these notices on behalf of those taxing authorities, including your city, school district, the state, and several others, depending on where you live and the type of property you own. Every year, each of those taxing authorities sets a budget for the upcoming year, and they determine how much property tax levy will be necessary to support that budget. A change in any of those city, county, or school district budgets and levies could impact your property taxes. To make it really simple, think of the property tax levy as a pie. Once the levy amount or size of the pie is established, it's time to determine how you divide it. The number of slices represents the number of properties contributing to the pie. The size of each slice is determined by value. Bigger slices represent higher valued properties, and vice versa. How can the size of your slice become smaller? First, your government can lower the levy amount collected from property owners, meaning the overall size of the pie gets smaller. Second, more properties could be built in the community, which helps ease the share for everyone. No doubt, you've heard the phrase, many hands make light of one. And third, the amount of money local governments receive from state and federal sources could increase, leaving the local government less dependent on the tax levy. But what about your property value? Where does that fit in? Your property taxes can be affected by your property's value. The market value of your property is the likely selling price in the current market. That value is evaluated or assessed at least every five years by an assessor hired by your county or city. The assessor will determine if the property's value is similarly to comparable properties in the area. Your property taxes are also affected by the value of other properties, whether it's a home or business, existing or new. A significant increase or decrease in another property's value can affect your property's value. As we said earlier, new construction can help lower property taxes by growing the tax base, and thus diluting the tax responsibility. So the amount of property taxes you pay can be influenced by your property's value and the value of properties around you. Overall, the amount you pay in property taxes boils down to two things: a property's value, whether it's yours or someone else's, or a decision made by your local, state, or federal government. Collectively, the money supports, monforces, the roads we travel, where we learn, where we laugh, and where we live. In discussions regarding the 2020 budgets, we do have different revenue considerations. Now, as we're looking at the revenue considerations, if you note, we have the overall projected property tax increase. That is still yet to be determined. There was some reductions when you compared to the 2019 budget. There was a three-year COPS grant, which its last year was in 2019. So we do have $120,000 reduction in revenue there. We also had some, an additional reduction in de-grant for cadets. The police and fire pension aid that's indicated on the screen there, that is a pass-through. So as we go through the expenditure considerations, you will see that exact same $17,000. The community center does project to have around $27,000 additional revenue in 2020, as well as recreation with the $15,000 increase. There is a decline in $20,000 for special assessments, due to some special assessments being paid off. Pawn shop transaction fees, we're anticipating a $5,000 increase in that. The pools anticipated to have an additional $6,100 in revenue, and then there were some miscellaneous adjustments for about $8,600. On the expenditure side, we do anticipate wages and benefits to increase by about $445,000. Election staffing will also increase by approximately $114,000, due to the fact that in 2020, we do have three elections that will take place. Professional services within finance, we anticipate that decreasing by $25,000, and there are some service contracts in administration that will also decrease by $10,000. Under our legal fees, the completion of the code updates occurred at the end of 2019, so we do have a $15,000 reduction in legal fees. We have an increase for our West Metro Fire District, and then we have other miscellaneous increases of $50,000. Now, if you are looking for some various property tax relief programs, there are several that are available. All of this information is available on the Minnesota Department of Revenue website, or you can call their number that is listed on the screen. The four different types of relief programs, one would start with the Home Said Credit Refund, and then we also have a Renters Refund. We have a Special Property Tax Refund, and then there's also a Senior Citizen Property Tax Deferral Program. The budget timeline, well, we are towards the end of the process for the overall budget. So tonight, we have our Truth in Taxation Public Input Meeting, and this council meeting will be followed by a work session, and then there could potentially be additional work sessions between December 4th and December 17th, and we anticipate reviewing and adopting the final 2020 property tax levy and budget on December 17th. And at that time, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to address them.
All right. Council, do you have any questions? Go ahead, Nancy.
Question, Jean, the Truth in Taxation Public Input, can we continue that on December 17th?
Yeah.
You absolutely may. Because we're discussing more of the budget reduction, or the levy reduction, right after this meeting tonight.
Absolutely. You will likely want to continue the public input meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Jean? Nobody else wants to say anything? Okay. All right. Thank you, Jean. So, I think before we get to the public hearing, there's just a little bit I want to talk to, I guess, the public about. Kind of go over some of the history of Crystal, what street assessments, how they have affected what we're trying to accomplish, and what our future kind of looks like in terms of what we're trying to accomplish. It helps give us perspective as we move forward to try to create this budget. I want you to know that this is very unusual for us not to have a budget locked down in December. I've never experienced anything even close to that. I've seen minor adjustments from a September, that would be the preliminary approval, which ended up being about 18%. This one is going to come back to about 9%. That's a dramatic change, and quite frankly, the September one was a dramatic amount. But, before we get into a lot of those kinds of details, you know, when we look at Crystal's history, we kind of, we kind of see that we've been a pay-as-you-go city, and it goes back from the beginning of our history. I think one of the first things I remember when I was here in Crystal was the fire trucks we got. The fire trucks, we got four of them for West Metro, and I remember Crystal paid cash for those, and that was kind of cool. Joint Powers, or Joint Water Commission, that's where we, that's where we get our water from, and we have a joint water commission that regulates that. But, the bottom line is, when it comes down to any major repair, we have to fund that from the city. I think a lot of us remember what happened in Robbinsdale, when we had a water main kind of blow out 42nd Street. That was a major, major event. And, what did we do from Crystal as a response to that? We were able to pay cash what we needed for our portion of that, the joint water commission. It's, you know, it goes all the way back. When we look at other things like vehicles, public works building, you know, all the other different equipment that we get for public works, we plan for it and we pay cash. That changed kind of dramatically in the 90s. When Crystal was trying to come up with roads, how are we going to pay for roads? We don't seem to have it in our budget. So what happened in the mid 90s was, there was a pretty good argument here in these chambers about how are we going to pay for roads, and what came of that was assessments, because we really didn't have any choice. For roads, street reconstruction, it's extremely expensive. It's more expensive than buildings. It's more expensive than anything else we do, especially with the utilities underneath. So at that time, because we didn't have enough in savings, we were forced to do the assessments. Now, one of the first things that happened when, after I was elected, it was probably 2014, we eliminated the assessments in Crystal. We were starting to do assessments for street repair, not only just for construction, but repair. For the reconstruction, we continued the phase until the entire city was done, from south to north, and those assessments remained until that project was done. Do you remember the year?
I want to say 17.
17, I think, is the year.
It was.
But, in 14, we kind of made the commitment to not do those assessments. Now, what does that mean? I had Jean calculate kind of what that looks like. It was a $40 million cut in revenue for the 25 years. So from the mid 90s till 2017, we cut $25 million worth of revenue. It's what I call the unplanned tax cut, because we haven't really addressed that. Because when we have to turn around and look at more street reconstruction, which isn't too far ahead of us, we're going to have to tear up our roads again, and then take care of the utilities underneath that. So it's going to be a little bit more expensive than the last round. It's going to be infrastructure, both roads and utilities, and we need to plan for that now, or we're going to be forced back into assessments. So, the reason I'm telling you this history and what we've gone through is to help you understand, when we start getting into conversations about how much is going to the operation budget, and how much is going to capital, you'll have a better understanding why, at least myself is pushing for more money to go to capital than to operations, because we have to come up with a lot of money to replace that revenue cut we did. When we, when we put that in today's dollars, it's a $60 million, it's a $60 million, in today's dollars, that's what that 40 million was. So we took 3%, increased it by that, actually Jean did, and in today's dollars, that was a $60 million tax cut, or revenue cut, however you want to look at that. A lot of people want to say it's a tax cut, because revenue, it ultimately comes from our citizens. So I tend to look at it more like a tax cut rather than a revenue cut, and when I say that, I intermingle those two terms quite a bit. Just want you to understand what I'm saying when I, when I use one or the other, I'm kind of meaning the same thing. So what is $60 million? It's a big number, and we don't really, we don't really know what that means, but if you take the $60 million and you divide it by 25 years, which is the period of time that project took, that's about a $2.4 million a year revenue cut that we experienced. So when we come around full circle, and we're going to be doing roads again, somehow, we have to come up with $2.4 million a year to handle that project. But that's in today's dollars. The 60 million is in today's dollars. The majority of our future street reconstruction is going to be, not in the next five years, or maybe even not in the next 10 years, that we're in a window of opportunity to where we can start saving money, so that we don't have to go back to assessments. So that's kind of what we're into now, and that's why I'm pushing for higher capital. I'm thinking by the time we actually start doing the majority of that reconstruction and utility improvement underneath those streets, it's going to be closer to 80 million. And when we take that and divide that by 25 years, I think, we'll wait for it, I got it here somewhere, $3.2 million a year. Now, those are big numbers, too, and again, it's all about perspective. It's all about, well, what is $3.2 million to me as a taxpayer? What you saw on your tax bills was an, almost an 18% increase in one year. In order to come up with $3.2 million, it's going to be a 32% increase in your tax levy. That's a lot, and I don't think any of us want to do that, not all in one year, that's for darn sure. So what we've done, I think you've, a lot of people, when we go knocking on doors, we talk to a lot of people, and they say, "Why have my utilities gone up?" Well, I kind of spoke to it, I kind of alluded to what that means. The next time we tear up streets, we're going after the utilities way underneath the streets. We've increased utility costs to cover that utility capital expenditure, to what it takes to replace those water mains, those valves, all that stuff. So, did we increase the utilities? Yes, we did. And that's so that we lessen that $3.2 million a year that we're going to need to, in the future, to redo our roads and our utilities. So, it just kind of gives you a little bit of perspective as to where we are, where we're going, and why we're going. I have no intention, and nobody on this council that I know of has any intention of raising the tax levy by 32%. There are other ways we can do that, and there's other ways we have done that. One I refer to is the utilities. Two, we have something called fiscal disparities. That's money we get from another source outside of Crystal. It's an intergovernmental transfer. Now, this year, we, I don't even know the number, but this year, we received a pretty large increase in what fiscal disparities gives as revenue for the city, and we're able to take that and apply it to our capital. So that's taking a big chunk, and as we go through this final budget process, I'm going to be pushing for more of the increase to go to capital, and that's why. I've been kind of screaming for a couple of years, you know, "We need more in capital, we need more in capital, we need more in capital." And the council, for their reasons, and the staff, for their reasons, wanted to go and do it more in the operation general budget. I lost that battle. It's okay. I'm getting to the point where we can't lose that battle anymore, or we're going to be forced in assessments. And, I'm not going to get into a lot of detail about why I think assessments are bad. It's just one of those things, I think it's better for another discussion, but I do think assessments are bad. I think it's very hard for someone on a fixed income to come up with, I think in the later part of the street reconstruction, it was $11,000 for some houses. I think the average was a little bit lower than that. I think that's unfair for a citizen to have that kind of surprise with, or like a year's notice, it's less than a year's notice, and that's why I'm pushing to try to never go back to assessments. Now, as we go forward, there's some things we're going to be doing. We're going to probably be having a public safety building, which is for our police. It's going to give them a facility that's modern, and you're thinking, and the way I think about it is, when it was first proposed, to me is, why are we doing that in a time when we're in such a deficit in our capital? And I alluded to it earlier. The capital that we need for doing utilities and streets is so dramatically large, larger than anything else we do, we're going to be able to handle that public safety building in just a few, few years, with decent increases in capital at this point. The big deal is the streets. The big deal is the utilities, and I want to set this city up long-term, so that they can, so that we can pay for those streets without doing assessments. I'm not saying that a building, a new building in the city of Crystal is cheap, but when you compare it to the other, there's definitely a huge difference. So know that that's coming, and hopefully with the, whatever budget we come up with, you know, this year, it's going to help make that less painful for us, and make us be able to accomplish it without having to go into any debt. That's my goal. I think it's achievable. I think the council thinks it's achievable. And in fact, if you want to go to the council, the work session afterwards, there's three proposals that say that's achievable. And, and quite frankly, when we get done with that, those funds will be repurposed for our future needs, with infrastructure and streets above that infrastructure. So, I usually don't talk a lot, I'm usually a guy of few words. It just occurred to me, at this time, in this process, we're finishing up a biannual budget. It's a two-year budget, that we've never done that before, and it's important to kind of reflect and see how things are going. And during that reflection, I realized I hadn't talked a lot about this in a comprehensive start-to-finish way to the public, and I think it's important for you to know that. So, that's kind of where we're at. I don't have a lot more to say on that, but, you know, if you have questions about what I've said, don't be afraid to reach out to me. My phone number is on the website. I'd be happy to talk you through it. If you have specific questions, I'd be happy to talk you through what my vision is, and kind of what the council's vision is. Sometimes, they're not the Sometimes they're not the same, and then staff's vision is sometimes even different than that. And we can talk about what those differences are. So, um, I think, I'm not gonna speak for the other council members, but I know most of them are perfectly willing to have those same conversations with you. With that, I think I'm gonna go to the, to the public hearing. This public hearing is to hear testimony for, uh, anyone wanting to give testimony on the property tax and housing redevelopment authority levies. And I do have a couple of people who are willing to speak. And I'm, quite frankly, I'm, I'm glad you're here. It's so much easier talking to you when you're here than have empty chairs. I know it's on TV, and some of you watch on TV, but it's great to have you, and it's great to hear your perspective. And I think if we keep the dialogue going, we're gonna have a better understanding of what we're trying to accomplish. One thing I didn't say that I, that is kind of interlaced into all that financial talk is, this plan is designed to help those who, who can least afford taxes. And it's also there for the people who can easily afford the taxes, and they just want their pothole fixed. It's the most efficient way I can come up with to deal with, you know, people at both, both ends of the spectrum. So, we are looking forward to implementing this plan in the long term. And I look forward to hearing from you at this time. We do have, uh, Robert Bello, Senior, is here. Robert, would you please step forward, adjust the microphone?
Would you like to let some of the other people go, because mine will probably be long-winded? Would you like to let somebody else talk first, Debbie?
That's fine. I'm, I'm good with you going first. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. You don't want to take what they're going to say?
Uh, good evening, members of City Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Robert Bello, Senior. I live at sixty-six, sixteen, fifty-eighth Avenue North. I'm a long-term resident, Ann knows that, some of you others might know that, some of you might not. And, uh, I've seen this deal before, where we had the taxes were, I don't know, eleven percent, sixteen percent, sixteen point nine back in the mid-two thousands, you know? And nothing's changed, and city services have gotten either the same or worse than they have when taxes were a lot cheaper. So, what I see is I see a police department, a fire department, that are probably somewhat overbloated, in my opinion. You know that some people are making a pretty good wage here in the city, but we can't keep a line of taxes. You've done a good job the last couple of years, I'll tell you that. I've seen it, I looked at my numbers. I'm not complaining about what my house is assessed at. But my problem here is, when you mentioned the seventeen percent going down to nine percent, it actually looks to me like, hey, look at this deal we got here, you know, seventeen percent, we just knocked it down to nine, it looks like car deal to me. That's what it looks like when you tell. So, you're saying something here, but you're doing this to make us feel better. Doesn't make me feel better at all. Nine percent doesn't make me feel good.
May I stop you?
Sure, can.
Okay. I'd like to respond to that, because I think that's a deception that I don't want to stand. Our intention, I'm talking about this council, everybody at this council, our intention was to pass a nine percent budget in September. It did not work out that way.
I understand that, but when I look at that video, that's what it looks like.
But there's no intention of deception here from this council?
No, but it, I didn't say there's an intention. I'm saying what it looks like.
Yeah, okay.
To a layperson, that's what it looks like.
Thank you for letting me interrupt you.
That's okay, that's fine, that's okay. Now, you brought up the road deal. And I know that's a sore subject with a lot of people, including myself, but I bit it down, I said, "I gotta pay it, no big deal, we gotta handle it." Even my son paid part of it, which surprised the death out of me. So, you know, I, I got in on the new driveway deal, I thought that was a great deal to offer to the residents, but I can already see signs of road issues. And we still have a problem with flooding in our road from a poor design. So, whoever does that job, as far as, you know, making the roads and doing that, did a lousy job. Because I've got a street that floods in the middle. So, last year at this time, probably in September, we had a three-inch rain blast. So, I took the truck around with camera and went through every block. Every block in the middle flooded. And they never did that prior to the street repair. So, who screwed that up? Public Works. I didn't screw it up, because I didn't make that. But I have video prior to that, where the roads weren't reconstructed, where they were, yeah, down on Elmhurst, where it did, that's kind of where I live. And I noticed now, when I talked to Mick, he said, "Now in Becker Park, we put in a big holding pond, great big holding pond, gonna take care of the problem." Didn't take care of the problem this year. Three inch, three and a half inch rain, there it was, flooded again. And Lord forbid, we get a ten-inch rainfall, I know what's gonna happen to my neighbors' yards. It's gonna be in their houses, whereas it wasn't before, it was partway up the yards. But that's something that was not addressed properly. But here they are, they're still working, they're still getting money, big deal. It's not our problem, we'll leave it to the next guy. So, here we are, let's tack on some more percent for the residents. It's the same thing with the policing and the fire. You know, somebody decided they wanted to take all the stop signs down. That was dumb, in my opinion. I think he knows who I'm talking about. I won't mention any names. Anyways, that turned into a big row in our neighborhood. And now it's turned into a speed zone, you know? Same thing with the parking. Here it is, parking ticket. Everybody knows, excuse me, that I got a parking ticket in my neighborhood on that. So, I said, "I'm gonna call nine-one-one." And I have. Nobody else has gotten tagged for it, just myself. You know, just seems like, when I complain about something, I'm the guy who gets it, and then nobody else does. I bet I called nine-one-one fifteen times on that this year. Nobody else has gotten a ticket. It's still going on today. Almost every day, somebody parks on that no parking sign. I called the state, the state said, "Yep, the signs can come down." The only thing you cannot do is put up a no-truck sign, and there was, uh, none of the, uh, what do they call those things in the road, the humps in the road if you drive over the bumps?
Speed bumps.
Yeah, speed bumps, you can't put those in. Otherwise, all those signs can come down. We encourage you to take them down, for public safety, might as well just take them down altogether, you know? But nine, nine percent, sorry, it still doesn't cut it with me. You know, like I said, the road reconstruction deal, the road should be lasting a lot longer. I am a firm believer in doing the seal coating, which makes the roads last longer. I know other people don't believe it, I do. The Mayor Mensma was adamant about that. And he was right, it does help and save the roads. Our road lasted sixty-some years. It's not gonna make it sixty years this time. It's either poor materials you guys are using, or whoever you bit through, I don't know what else there is. Those roads went a long way. Tell me why they wouldn't go that now? Asphalt's asphalt. You know, if they didn't reconstruct it right, somebody did it wrong. You know? I, I, I'm sorry, you know, the only alternative for me, I'm at the end of my road in Crystal here. You know, I've lived here a long time in my life. It's either run for your job next year, or your job, or your job.
Please.
I'm serious, I will. And I'm not gonna raise taxes like this, period. I, I'm gonna tell you that right now. The only thing I would even think of doing is putting a citywide sales tax. That's more fair to everybody. And the other thing I would propose, which I didn't before, the state, as far as I'm concerned now, can legalize marijuana. I don't care who smokes it, whatever they do with it, as long as it goes to pay my property tax and other people's property tax, that's fine. They can smoke themselves to death on that stuff, if it takes away my portion of this stuff. That would be fair. I'd be happy to have that. But you guys need to do something, even nine percent is still way too high. I know where this is gonna end. What's next year, fifteen percent? Year after, another fifteen percent? Taxes have gone up fifty percent since two thousand and one, two thousand and two.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you again.
Sure.
We have not raised our levy by fifteen percent ever.
I got several here that disagree with you.
I, I think you're looking at your tax bill, which is a different thing, and it has all the other different things that the, that the video was talking about.
Fifteen percent, my taxes, when I look at my taxes, I look at...
If you don't understand the taxes and how we raise taxes, and you're blaming us for what your valuation and the valuation is...
No, it isn't about the valuation.
I think it is, because you're saying fifteen percent, and it's just not. Last year was six percent, you said fourteen.
I'm not saying last year, year before, the last few years, but during the mid-two thousands.
What you're seeing is a shift. You're seeing a shift from, uh, from commercial properties back to residential. You, you remember when you used to come a lot more often? There was a period of time there in two thousand nine, ten, eleven, somewhere in there, you actually, your, your property tax went down, and that was due to the valuation. The, the tax burden was being shifted from homes to commercial. And what we've seen for the last few years is that come right back, too. And we're, we're to the point right now where we're gonna see valuations increase probably side by side, whether it be commercial or whether it be your residence. And we shouldn't see as much fluctuation by that, because if everything moves up in value the same, it's not gonna change the size of the pie as much.
So, now let me ask you this question. Is the business community in our city taxed the same way, nine percent for them? Is this straight across the board for business and residential?
Yeah.
So, somebody like Pastor owns a three-point-four million dollar shopping center, is gonna get hit nine percent? That's a lot of money.
Yeah.
You know, plus, we pay more on top of it, because the school district's in there, so we're paying that tax for them renting in there. So, that's another tax that we get on top, that's a double deal for them.
I'm sorry, say that again, I didn't follow that.
The school district rents a big space from the shopping center owner. So, we're in essence paying extra tax with this, with the school district deal going on, too. Because they don't have a school, they put all the stuff in the shopping center. So, that, we're paying that, and then they pay the taxes, so they're paying rent. So, we're paying ex, you know, actually that rent. Some of that tax we're paying is on that.
That's an interesting way of looking at it.
It is, but it's true, you know, because it's in there.
Okay.
So, I hope, I hope you can change your mind on it. But if I run next year, I, I'll, I'll change somebody's mind on it. You guys won't be happy if I'm in there, I'll tell you that right now.
All right.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have Edith Kellenhofer? Okay, perfect. Go ahead and give us your address and your name and...
Oh, Edith Kellenhofer, forty-five, twenty-three Brunswick Avenue North. And I just want to tell you, I agree with you, Jim, on that. Doing away with the street repair, you know, the assessing of it.
Yes.
Because those that got, got it first, they paid less, and as the years went on, these other people had to pay more, because the expense got more. So, I agree with you on that. And we, yes, we should be having, putting money aside for them, street repairs. I agree with him, too, because I don't think we use the best material in those street repairs. Because like he was saying, flooding in the middle of the street? Yeah, we've got that. So, there was bad design, and I'm not sure the asphalt, I don't know, is gonna last. But we need to use good materials. We can't just...
I agree, yep.
You know, if, if you're gonna be paying without assessing, maybe you're trying to cut costs to keep the bill down, I don't know. But we gotta use better materials than what they are, because in the long run, it's gonna cost you more. So, and my next question would be, did, when we built the new fire station north there, I mean, uh, not the fire station.
Public Works.
Public Works building? We paid cash for that?
We did.
We're in an environment where we're headed towards negative interest rates. And with the interest rate so low, and maybe going to go negative, when we do a big building thing like that, maybe we should be spreading that out over years.
So, would we bond for that? We don't get a negative interest rate. We actually pay a positive interest rate.
That might be, but it's really extremely low.
Well, when you look at the dollars, when you look at the dollars that we, we actually, uh, spend on interest on those low rates, it's, it's sizable. It's very sizable.
If we took that money and put it into earning interest while it sat there?
We do, we do.
Yeah? Were you saying it's gonna be more than that?
No, not necessarily.
So, we could have maybe actually made a little money if we hadn't paid for that building? Cash?
No, we wouldn't have made more on that money by holding it than the interest rate we paid. We're governed to have specific investments, and they're almost always less than what we pay for interest, just like you and I personally. To get something fixed income, uh, an income-type thing, or you go to the bank, you could go to a money market, even when you go to those, those new savings accounts through the credit card companies, you, you're not making as much as basically what you're losing on inflation or, um, or, or the interest you would pay on a, on a, a card, or a bond, or a loan, you know, or like a mortgage. You're always gonna pay more to the institutions.
Yeah, I don't know how much more, though.
Varies per product.
Yeah, yeah. But if we had spread that big building cost over, say, thirty years, or what do they, what do they give you to pay for that? If we had spread that over thirty years, that would have left us more money for maybe some of this other stuff coming up, like road repairs and, and, uh, like you say, the infrastructure is going to go to heck, because it's all old. That would leave more money not tied up in that building, which is gonna get old, too.
Sure. So...
If you spread that over the life, we, we say the life of the building is thirty years, I don't know what the life is. But spread that over thirty years, or whatever the bank is gonna let you, do it. That frees up more of your money, so maybe you don't have to raise taxes as...
It also costs more. It costs literally more money, because you have to pay for the, for the project itself, plus the interest of the bank. I don't know how you spin it to where it's gonna cost less to pay the bank and the project. I'd rather just pay for the project, period. Now, did you, did I hear you say you're, you would support saving money for the future roads?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so, that's kind of the same thing.
Because that assessment wasn't the same for everybody, you know?
Right, right.
So, yeah, I do that. And if they're not backing you on that, you'll have to let us know, you know?
Okay, yeah.
Because I think that is a more fair way of doing it.
Right. Well, I, I've been working on it for a couple of years. I mean, this, this concept is, I think we're in year four of this concept, with the different pillars of, you know, first of all, no new debt. Second pillar, pay off old debt. Third pillar, which is the hardest part and the part we're in, which is long-term planning and funding that plan. It doesn't necessarily mean all from property taxes. We've done some through, uh, through utility usage. We get some from intergovernment exchange, you know, from other, actually other areas of the communities, not Crystal, but outside of Crystal. So, there's a lot of different things. We get LGA, fiscal disparities. Those are, those are resources for us that don't come straight out of Crystal residents' pockets. It's important to know that. And we, we have quite a bit of that in our city. And as we, if we see increases in those, we're putting them straight to capital, so that we don't have to have those increases. That's the plan.
It is still hard for me to fathom, because
Yep.
when I went to buy my house, I took a loan out for it. And I, I paid for it, you know, in less years than what I took it out for, but you know...
Good for you.
If, if I had to save up cash and just plop it down there, I probably wouldn't have a home. So, it's hard for me to fathom that a city can just plop money down into a building that maybe I would think be spread over twenty years.
Well, it, it takes a lot of time to save that much money. So, it's spread over years anyway. You know, it takes some time for that to be saved, just like you, it took you, it's the difference of, well, here, let me, let me back up. You know, people call that good debt. You know, when you buy a house, it's, it's good for you in the long run, yes. But when you look at how much you've paid in the price of the house, plus the interest, oftentimes, if you go the full term of a thirty-year mortgage, you're paying two times the amount of that house by the time you're done. And if you can save ahead of time, if it fits your, your family structure and you have the ability to do it, most people don't, and most people won't, and that's okay. But if you could do that, by the time you bought it, all of a sudden, your expenses are down to nearly nothing. And that's attractive to, to me personally, and that's attractive to me on the city level. Because on the city level, if LGA gets cut, it's not a big deal, because we don't, we're not tied to paying those payments. If fiscal disparities, if the formula changes, we're not tied to those payments long-term. It gives us an, an ability to have the agility to, to react to some of our risk. Our risk is different as a city than it is for, uh, for an individual. You know, we have risk of, of income, and if we have variable rates, we have risk of interest rate. What we have a risk in the city is that intergovernmental exchanges of funds that we get from other sources. If that formula goes against us, and we've got nothing but loans, how are we gonna pay those loans? Well, we're gonna come knocking on your door and say, "Hey, we don't have a choice, we have to increase your taxes." I don't want to do that. There's people here with fixed incomes. Any increases is, is problematic. So, we're, what we're really trying to do is make that as minimal as possible. And plus, we're trying to replace that sixty million, or how, whatever you want... And plus, we're trying to replace that 60 million or how, whatever you want to use, current dollars, past dollars or future dollars. It's a big chunk. It's a big annual chunk, so...
Okay.
I hope that helps.
What is a city limited to investing in, too? Our funds that are, we're going to be sitting, you know, you've got to collect now for the future?
Do you ever have, do you have investments with bonds? In, in your personal portfolio? It's similar to that if you do. You don't have to answer that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to ask you a personal question. But it would be similar to that, the, the yield would be similar. Yep. We're, uh, we're required by state law.
Couldn't we have put that money from that building into the bonds then?
Yeah, but we would have lost on purchase power with inflation and we would have had to pay interest on the mortgage. So, it, it really overcomes the benefit of saving it.
Yeah, bond prices are too low right now, I'm not in them. I'd rather play stocks.
Right.
But anyway, thank you for hearing me.
Yep, you're welcome, thank you for coming in. Now, those are the only two people I've got yellow slips for who wanted to talk. Is, I, I see there's more people here, is anybody else wishing to make comments? All right, why don't we start with you, Bert? Do you have a yellow sheet filled out?
Uh, there wasn't one available.
Bert, could you hand him one from the, or DS? At the podium, excuse me. Thank you. Start tasking people to do different things. Thank you, Bert.
Mayor Council?
Yes.
Thank you. Bert Ord, 6760th Avenue North. I looked at the Hennepin County statement, took a pretty close look at it. Add to that various articles that I read related to that. And they were talking about a pretty high percentage gain for their tax increase as well. And they, they moderated it. And it, it appears that the city of Crystal is doing the same. And I got a general gist of what that would amount to for me personally. And I'm perfectly happy with it and I'm glad that you guys are trying to keep it as low as you can. I appreciate your efforts, as well as the staff's efforts. And I hope you can continue to scrutinize it as you always have. Thank you.
Thank you, Bert.
Thank you, Bert.
I'd like to respond to, to that as well. You know...
Can I sit down?
No, you can sit down, feel free. You know, Richard said, is it Richard? Richard said, Robert, excuse me, sorry. Robert said that nine is too high. And we agree. We have a lot of heartburn with nine. I'm talking about we, every, most everybody here. And, and the reason, in our two-year budget, we initially planned on a 6% increase for this year. And we got here and staff says, look, um, we need some more here and we need, need some more there. And we're like, no, we said 6% last year. And we got to the point after some discussion, uh, with some differences, like I was talking about earlier, differences between what should go to capital, what should go to operation budget, the general budget. We're still not in agreement and we got like two weeks to get it done. So, it's not easy for us to do the 9%. Bert, you're okay with 9%? We're kind of not, but we know it's a necessity, especially when we take a look at what revenue cuts we've taken, so, um, you know...
One pre-deditional comment, please, Mayor.
Yes, please.
Uh, you can't believe how many people have increased my rates on various things from fees to memberships to you name it. 20%.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm feeling okay with 9%.
Yeah, you're right, we have, we have neighbors that have seen 18%. We have 19%. Not 19%, I meant to say like 14%. But yeah, we're, we're still trying to stay lower than, than our neighbors. Did we have others who wanted to speak? You did, sir? I want to go first, you go first. Yeah, please don't approach, thank you. All right.
My name is Chris Stark, I live on 6023 36th Avenue North. And I guess I have a comment and a question. Now, you said that the, the property values, that's going to be, that's a, because mine went up substantially. And I, I don't, who's, who sets that value? I mean, they kind of laid it out a little bit.
Hennepin County sets that. They do, they talked about five years assessments. Each year though, they do an adjustment based on sales. So, you'll see an adjustment every year.
All right.
And that's, you know, in our city, we've seen some dramatic increases in the prices of houses in the last two years. It's crazy what the prices have gone again.
It's significant. I, I'm going through my old ones and it's like more than double sometime, and triple compared to other years, since 2017 even.
When did you move in?
Uh, 2000-ish?
2000-ish, so you experienced, did you see, do you remember seeing your property value dive?
That was in 2010-ish?
Yeah.
Maybe a little bit after that?
Yeah.
But even then, our taxes, I think, I went back, the taxes went down in 2017.
Yeah.
Was...
So, the taxes don't go down, but your property value goes down?
Right.
That's what's so, that's what's so strange about the valuation. You know, if everybody, if the valuation can do a lot of different things, but we still have the same pie we have to pay for. So...
That's actually one of the things I was going to bring up too, is because I, I, I thought that's what you said about Hennepin County. And the problem is, is I had to pick one meeting to go to, because unfortunately, your guys' meetings were exactly at the same time, just about.
Okay.
And coming from work, I couldn't come home, deal with my kids, whatever, get to that meeting at 6 o'clock and then rumble over here for 7 o'clock. So, I, and I, I know that's not your guys' fault, but I'm just saying that is, that is something that kind of sucks, because I couldn't go there and, you know, explain my disgust for how much my house went up in value. If that's a bad thing, I don't know, but, um...
Depends if you're selling.
Yeah. So, um, and then one thing I did say, I wanted to just to mention too, is that you were saying that, like, I'm getting a 15.4, you know, uh, increase. And I know that's not the city, but my tax burden is increasing by 15.4%. And so, it's not only the city, but I do want you guys to realize that it, you guys may not be affecting it, but you're part of it.
Okay, yes.
And that, that's a big pinch for a guy who, I mean, my wages hasn't increased by 15%.
Right.
Not even fricking close.
Right.
So...
Right.
Um, and I'm not, I'm definitely not blaming you guys, but I do want you guys to understand that my tax burden didn't, went up, not because of the city, but it did go up.
Okay, I want to bring you to a different level of understanding. In your estimated tax statement that you received, it's showing an 18% increase from us.
Right.
It is showing that.
I, I'm really glad you guys clarified that. That is going to significantly drop that part of it.
That part of it, you can do the math, you know?
Right.
If, if you care to or if somebody can.
Does Hennepin looking at that same thing though? Are they going to have a...
I can't speak to that, is there anybody here who can?
I didn't think, they're going to be around four or five, I think 5% or something.
Are you going to speak to people on TV?
No. It seemed to me that Hennepin was around five or 6% increase.
Okay, yeah, I can't speak to it.
Right. I knew you guys couldn't, but I figured.
Your, uh, your Hennepin County portion went from 632 to 725.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so if you look at that, you know, if you...
I didn't do the math on that, I only did the math on what you guys did, so I'm sorry.
Right, exactly, so, I mean, that's, that's pretty much where the heartburn comes from them, so...
Right, which I think now, looking back, if I'd have picked a meeting, I probably should have went to that one, because I do appreciate you guys, how you guys laid it out. It made me feel a little bit, a lot better about what the city is doing. But reality is, I'm still getting kind of pounded here.
Yeah, we just, we just, we just, 9% is not traditional for here, it just isn't. Nancy?
I have a question, since you're bringing up Hennepin County property tax and property values. We haven't touched on it yet, but there's the meetings that we schedule, the free meetings with a county assessor, where you can cha- challenge them for want of a better word. And they will come out to your home and oftentimes, they do lower that.
Oh, sure.
So, that may help adjust on your taxes as well.
And do you have to, how do you get in to...
And do we have any scheduled as a...
We don't have a schedule, it's called an open book meeting, it's usually in late March or April of every year. And Hennepin County assessing staff will take your input and then look at reevaluating your property. And you will get a notice, every property owner gets a notice of that as well.
But that's going to be for next year, that won't help anything for this year?
Correct, it isn't, won't go back retroactively, unfortunately.
Correct, yeah. It helps reduce, it could help reduce for the next year. But it's something, we've done this for many, many years.
Yep. Brendan?
So, I, I want, just kind of the perspective shift just a little bit. I don't want you to feel like you, um, that this was a wasted opportunity. I think you, but one, I greatly appreciate that you came here to speak. But I think, you know, that you were able to also learn and get clarification from not what just we're doing, but even how you tax the process. So, that aren't, that information you're armed with being able to go to the next step, okay? Who do you, who do I need to talk to or why is my bill going up so much? And, um, and what areas is that affecting me the most, you know? But we do take that, um, your sentiment into consideration, as far as, you know, we have heartburn with it, it's not, this, this is not easy. So, again, I thank you so much for coming, but I don't want you to feel like this was a wasted meeting. I think you, you already said how much you've gained by coming here, so you did gain some.
I would never say it was a wasted meeting, because I did, but I, I think if, if I would have known, this is the first time I've done this, if I'd have known what I know now, I probably would have went over there and pitched a fit over there.
Is there still time to do that?
But, well, here's the thing, you know, on that piece of paper, it's showing 18%. There's a reason to pitch a fit here. There's a reason for you to be here. We have clarity, we have, you know what our intentions were, you know what our intentions are. We passed a resolution in a special meeting to, to do a 9% flat tax increase. Now, will we end up at nine or 9.03? I don't know. But that's definitely where we're headed and it's just a matter of how we do that. And we talked about the dynamics between operations and capital and that's what we have yet to figure out.
Another thing too, that it's kind of sparked a memory, the fact that you guys have taken assessments away? I mean, when I moved into this community, I mean, just moved in, I got like a $5,600 assessment because of 36, because I live right on 36. So, when you guys did away with that, I, I would much rather you guys save money, pay for it in cash, than have me do another assessment, because that sucked.
Yeah, because of...
And that wasn't the only one, because then when they had to, because I'm on 36th and Brunswick, not only did I get pounded for the Brunswick, or the 36th Avenue, then when they did Brunswick, I got hammered with Brunswick. Now, that was a little less, but I still got hit twice. So, the assessment thing, I'm, I'm great, you guys didn't do that again.
Want to clarify, on 36th for that particular project, wasn't that Hennepin County or was that us?
I don't think that was, that wasn't a seal, that's when they actually re, I think they widened it.
No, I think that was us.
That was us, okay.
I think that was us.
Okay.
I don't remember who did that, I just know it cost me. The assessments suck.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for hearing me.
Yeah, thank you for coming in, Chris. All right, sir?
But you know, I just, can I just say one thing about the assessment? You know, the council now is strongly opposed to assessments. That doesn't mean in 10 years, when there's a whole different mix of people, that they might not reinvent it. So, I mean, just be careful of the...
Well, well, more importantly, keep coming.
Yeah.
Keep coming, this is your forum, we are representing you. Keep coming. All right, Tom?
Yeah.
Introduce yourself and address.
3348 Yates Avenue North. Anyway, I hate to, one of the questions was, why Hennepin County just happens, you guys overlap? Because I was going to go to Hennepin County too, I was at 6 o'clock tonight. And this was easier to get to for me, plus you're the higher amount of money out of that proposal, the 250 out of the 400 that they want me to pay. And also, you know, last year it went up 250 for me, so now it's 4,400 for my house. I've been living here for 30 years, I built my own house in 88. So, uh, back then it was pretty cheap.
Yeah.
But of course, I'm starting to sound like an old person, like when you saw the, like the cereal back then was, you know, whatever.
We didn't say that, we didn't say that.
But I also told my wife too, I said, you know, you'll have to earn the 4,400 and pay income tax on the money to give it to you people.
Right.
What's wrong with this picture? I'm getting taxed twice in a sense, because you're paying income tax on the money. Plus, it just takes money out of my pocket that I could go on vacation or get out of this place and it's cold out. But anyway, back to the tax stuff. Like the, the valuation, I understand that, because, you know, I've been through it for 30 years, like that. And this is someday, uh, like back in the 90s, they go, the politicians, we won't raise your taxes. But no, we'll raise the value of your house, so it raises your taxes. So, they, you know, it's a roundabout thing there. And I do agree with you about banking money and like the school system, all of a sudden, we need a new roof, so we'll have to tax people more. Why weren't you taking 1% of your budget and throwing it in a bank account? Because you know, like me, I have to redo my roof 20, 30 years down the road, a building fund. But anyway, that's a whole nother story. But, um, yeah, just, uh, now you're saying that it's going to be, I know it was like 18% or whatever it was on the, the form, this is a proposal, I understand too, so it's not set in stone.
So, I can give you a rough calculation? Just figure out what 9%? Oh, wait, can we?
Yeah, that's...
No, we can't. Just look at ours, yeah, it's, it's tough.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, it's all, and the other thing too is...
It's going to be half.
You see the state there where you've probably seen in the news where they, oops, we, you know, gave a $15 million away to something that we shouldn't have. Where's this accountability? I know this is a smaller venue, because it's just a city, but like those people, oh, we'll just tax people more to get more money or something. It's just, there's like a net, a well that it never ends, you know? And you, like you're saying too, I know there's a lot of, I'm, I'm going to be a fixed income down the road, I'm 61 years old.
Yeah.
And I'm self-employed. So, what I save is what I get, plus my social security. I don't have a pension coming and all this other stuff. So, you know, I need the money to bank, like the 400 bucks. If I could bank that for, it's not a lot of money, but keep banking it, like 401s and things.
Yeah.
I can use it when I'm old and can't do anything anymore.
You know, it, it's real interesting, because when, when you, when you have an emergency fund, if you have an emergency fund of 3% or, or whatever, or three months worth, or whatever you want to figure that, you're, you're odd. You know, and if...
Well, I know, most people live before they, you know, in debt.
The stats say we're doing something completely different. So, if we come with an assessment and you do have an emergency fund, you're the lucky one. The assessment's going to take your emergency fund as part of it.
Right.
But the others are forced into, into the interest rate on the property tax.
I'm lucky, I have adult kids, so I'm not done with the, the empty nest thing, you know?
Very cool.
What's his name over here? He has kids. And with just that few hundred bucks, I know, when I, you know, before, when I had kids, it, it takes a lot.
I'm, I'm excited about not paying their cell phone bill.
Yeah, well, well, I was thinking too, uh, when my, yeah, when we were younger, when, when we didn't have cell phones and stuff, we weren't paying those bills because it didn't exist, internet and all that. And the same with, you know, I'm, like I said, I'm starting to sound old, like, it's paying like 15 bucks for the phone on the wall. Now, you're paying, well, I'm paying with my kids and stuff, which is nuts, anyway, but...
Yeah.
Tisable bills on that. And they're older. Anyway, but now they got college debt up to their eyeballs, so...
Okay.
You know, what do you do? But anyway, thanks for letting me...
Yeah, thanks for coming, thanks for speaking.
If I may say, Tom, I love your T-shirt.
Oh, my God. It, it's true. My retirement is, you know, like this.
Thank you for coming, though.
I shouldn't complain, at least I'm lucky, I can help my kids out and things like that.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of, if you, you see them on the side of the road.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
All right. Last chance to speak, anybody else? All right.
Lynette Cornman, 3527 Kyle Avenue North. I was going to say, ask one question, no, he got me riled up about 36th Avenue. Okay, so, I don't like the assessments, but I don't know how they can say for next year, my house will go up 21,000. They have a magic, they have a crystal ball saying that my house is worth 21,000 more next year. I think that's pretty stupid how they have that on here, but... And about 36th Avenue, the turn lanes on 36th, Medicine Lake, all the major roads around here, I'm glad they're not cement. But traffic gets backed up so far, you could hardly get through a stoplight. With, you know, because you had to wait twice, because, you know, there are only one lane now, there used to be two, you know, two lanes on each side. used to be two, you know, two lanes on each side. So, anyway, that's my speech.
Yeah, it's different, it's a traffic conversation as opposed to a tax information. I share some of your concerns, I'm one vote. I'm one vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting. I would love to make some changes on 36. But I think, I don't know, I don't have all the information either, because I don't do traffic studies, so. Go ahead, Julie.
You know, interesting you bring that up, because I've noticed that lately too. It's like I stuck four or five times, stoplight rotations. And I was wondering the other day, and I keep meaning to ask Mark, so when an ambulance or a fire truck or something goes through, changes those lights, does that change the rotation? Because it seems like sometimes you go through and you can watch 10, 12 cars going through. I know this is...
This is way off topic.
I know, but I just want this answer.
But I will allow it.
Well, we're on it, though.
And then all of a sudden, it seems like you get three cars that go through.
So yes, when the EV, the motion, the opt-comms trip on, it does mess the cycle up, and it takes the sick, signal, some time to get back into the normal operating.
And so sometimes the cycle is shorter then, in order to get it back into...
Exactly, yeah.
I figured that.
All right. All right, thank you for coming in, Lynette.
Did the assessment, is that something that might interest you? The open book assessment review with an assessor to...
One, we're going to go out, because the council...
Usually it goes different, doesn't it?
What's that?
The assessor, if people meet with the assessor, generally, I don't want to say for everyone, but sometimes...
I don't know.
It depends on the home, but sometimes...
I think it's the other way around, I think generally they don't.
They don't?
I think it's generally they don't.
Ew.
Yeah, but, you know, the reason is because they're comparing it to fair market values within your own neighborhood.
Okay.
And if there's, if there's something that looks out of whack, that's when you're supposed to come in and do it. It's not just because all of the property in your neighborhood went up. I mean, yeah, we're looking at the numbers and we're saying it's whacked, but in relationship to that same neighborhood, it may not be. You know, so if you're going up a lot bigger percentage than your next door neighbor and other people in your neighborhoods, yeah, come in and have a conversation. That's the easiest way to compare it, is because you're kind of comparing the same area. It's really interesting when, when John Sutter does these maps, which show how much the property taxes are increasing or decreasing, and he does it in color, and it's amazing that there's different neighborhoods that are increasing and other neighborhoods are decreasing. And, you know, what we experienced with the reduction in, in prices of homes during the, after the crash of 2008, we got to see something that we haven't seen in my lifetime, where property values crashed almost 50% in some cases. And then to watch that come back, just neighborhood by neighborhood, you know, you'll see one or two years where it's starting to come back strong in one neighborhood, and one, a neighborhood just across the highway didn't respond, and next thing you know, they're starting to respond and the other one goes flat. It's just really cool to see that dynamic of market value in, I don't know, I think it's cool. Anybody else wishing to speak on the taxes? We'll stay off of traffic if we could, please. All right. I am going to continue this public hearing to December 17. You guys are welcome to come back. We hope to have a budget done, and at least a consensus of this council. And again, we're going to have work sessions, you guys are invited to the work sessions. It's not as much seating, but you're welcome if that's something you want to live through. That's all I got, so...
Or you could listen to them, too.
Yep, you can always listen to them online if you don't want to stay here, so. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
And that public hearing is continued. We are going to move on. And it's okay to leave if you'd like. We have another public hearing related to vacating the platted alley between 3537 Douglas Drive North and 3619 36th Avenue North. And John Sutter is here to speak on that. Welcome, John.
All right, thank you, Mayor, council members. This is a fairly straightforward project, I hope, so I just have a few slides, but I have additional images if questions come up. So the slideshow itself will be pretty quick. This is in regards to an alley that's kind of at the southwesterly corner of 36th and Douglas, right behind the commercial building where Milton's is. And on the right-hand half of the screen, you see sort of a zoomed-in parcel map. The area in red is the platted alley that is proposed to be vacated. So what's the deal with this alley? Well, this was platted in 1926. That means the right-of-way was created for the alley. However, the city has never built or maintained it as a public alley. In around 1950, when the house at 631936 was built, the owner, presumably the owner of that home, built a gravel driveway in the alley leading to their backyard. And then about 10 years later, when the commercial building on Douglas, on the other side of the alley, was built, presumably that owner built an asphalt or vituminous driveway, kind of over where the gravel driveway was, to go to their parking lot south of their building. The owner of 3537 Douglas has maintained that alley for approximately 60 years. Both owners have asked the city to vacate the platted alley between their properties. Why? Well, it's never been maintained or improved as a public alley. Its actual use is a private driveway maintained by 3537 Douglas, but also used by 631936. Neither owner wants the city to reconstruct it as a public alley, which would be very expensive. And the city would still retain a drainage and utility easement over the vacated alley if we ever have to do stormwater improvements, or private utility companies need to do, do something in that area, they would still be able to do that, just like they would if it were still a public alley. So how do we do this? Well, the first step is, tonight, after holding the public hearing, you would adopt the resolution vacating the alley. And then, because the alley would split with half going to each property owner, the owner of the house at 631936 would quitclaim their half of the alley to the owner of 3537 Douglas, because the Douglas property is the one that has been maintaining the private, the shared private driveway. And then 3537 Douglas would grant the house on 36th a driveway easement over not only the vacated alley, but also an access easement across their south parking lot to Douglas Drive. Because that reflects the way the homeowners at 631936 have been accessing the property, both from 36th and Douglas Drive. So again, tonight, you are asked to hold the public hearing, take any public comment, and then consider adoption of the resolution in your packet.
All right. Thank you, John. Are there any questions from council for John? Seeing none. Wow. They're all job. Thank you. At this time, I will open a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this issue?
I have a question.
Excuse me. Go ahead and step forward.
I didn't know this was going to happen, so sorry. Chris Stark, 602336 Avenue North. Would that limit, then, could no public use that to access the other parking lots? Because when I go to Milton's or whatever, sometimes I do use that back alley. Would that, would that then no longer be, be able to be used by the public?
In it, in its current, let me back up, because it's a commercial property, and it's basically a driveway for a commercial property, it's open to the public, I don't know how they would close that, but I guess theoretically, the owner of the building at 3537 Douglas could choose to stop the public from using what would now be a private driveway, but that would be detrimental to their business customers. So while I guess it would be legally possible for them to restrict it, I have no idea why they would ever do that, because it would be harmful to their business interests.
I agree with that.
Because I, what I see is, a lot of times, is like, so if the one parking lot to the north is full, people will go through that alley and then park on the one in the south. And then when we leave, especially like for me, who's on 36, I would then go around that building, come back onto 36, and then not have to do a big U-turn on Douglas there.
Yep.
So I think if they took, I'm all for it, as long as they don't take it away from the public, but if they're going to try to take it away from the public, I think you're doing a bit of a disservice for Milton's and the people in the business right there.
And again, just to emphasize what John said, it doesn't make sense for their business, for deliveries, for garbage, all that, there's just no reason for it, I don't think.
Yeah, I mean, we can't promise that the owner of, the two property owners would decide to restrict use of the alley.
Has it, have they been asked?
Well, they've not expressed any interest in doing so, but ownership can change too. So at some point in the future, a future owner could say, yeah, we don't want customers going, using the alley to get between the two parking lots. That's kind of the essence of it being a private driveway, is that the owner of the driveway gets to decide how it's used.
Right.
But I think it's sort of self-regulating, in that it would be detrimental to their business property for that to happen.
Right. Julie?
Why do you think they asked all of a sudden for us to vacate?
Well, it was sort, we initiated the conversation with them, because this is the last alley that we have not reconstructed.
Okay.
And the, you know, everybody else who got their alley reconstructed did get assessed. It was like the last special assessment-type projects that we did. And we, this didn't make sense to reconstruct it as a public alley, and so we approached the owners and said, it seems like this is basically a shared private driveway, it really isn't needed to be a public alley, what do you think? And they agreed with this approach. And so that is what prompted them to petition for the vacation. And we worked out all these different moving parts to ensure that they would, both parties would continue to have the access that they have had for the last 60 years.
It saves them some money. It would be quite an assessment for them to share the cost of having that alley improved, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yep, thank you. All right. Do we have a motion on that one? There it is. Looking for a motion? Nancy?
I would like to make motion for resolution vacating an alley between 631936 Avenue North and 3537 Douglas Drive North.
All right, thanks, Nancy. Looking for a second? John?
A second, I have motion.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Too many papers. Next is our regular agenda, and the first item on that agenda is the dispersments of $25,000 or greater. We've got just a small list today. Landscape Structures Inc. for Becker Park Playground Equipment and Delivery Installation for $404,877. Met Council for Waste Water Services for December of $130,599. Then Minnesota Para for the Employee and City Required Contributions for Pay Date 11/15/19, $60,715. Total dispersments of $25,000 or greater are $595,700, let me try that again, $595,0752.46. Are there any questions on any of these items? Julie?
Nope, I'll move approval for expenses over $25,000.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Seeing none? Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The council will consider approval of a contract with the City of Brooklyn Park for environmental health services for 2020. John is here to talk to us about that.
Thank you again, Mayor, council members, this should be even quicker. So this is an annual contract, you've all seen this before. Rather than have our own environmental health department, we contract the City of Brooklyn Park for assistance with very complex cases where we need additional expertise that we do not have in-house. So it covers things like unsanitary homes, garbage houses, things like that, but only the most severe cases, so we don't have that many of them. General public health nuisances, and then they also do the annual therapeutic massage license inspections. Terms of the contract, the hourly rate is $72 an hour, which is unchanged from 2019. There is a not-to-exceed amount of 2,000, which is the same as 2019. Just for point of reference, so far this year, they billed us $396. So we never get close to the $2,000 cap. I want to point out though, because this is a change from what was in your packet, late yesterday, Brooklyn Park added language, which is in blue on the screen, to clarify that they are not obligated to continue to provide services above and beyond the $2,000 cap. One way of reading the original language in the contract sort of implies that they would have to continue providing services to us for free after we hit 2,000, which obviously is no one's intent. We would then have to negotiate an amendment or something and figure that out, bring that back to you, in the unlikely event that happens. So that is the only purpose of that blue language, which is new and would be in the document to be signed tonight if you approve the contract. So with that, we would ask the council to approve the proposed 2020 environmental health contract with the City of Brooklyn Park.
All right, thank you, John. Questions for John? Seeing none? Looking for motion? Julie?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with the City of Brooklyn Park for environmental health services for 2020.
Thank you. Nancy?
I'll second.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. The council will consider a second reading of an ordinance adopting the recodification of the Crystal City Code. Troy Gilchrist is here to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And council, you've heard me refer to this many times, and this is the final action before the council to adopt the recodification that has been many years in the making. What you have before you is a relatively short ordinance that adopts a rather thick ordinance that codifies and brings together all of your updated code provisions and reformat it into a single, single code. One thing that this does is, it does provide an authorization that as staff, if we're working through and we notice cross-reference or something that's incorrect, it does give us the authority to make those corrections without having to come back with a whole formal amendment and two readings and all that sort of thing. Of course, that's just non-substantive changes. Any substantive changes, like always, those would go through a formal ordinance process. But frankly, a project of this scope, inevitably, there are some tweaks that need to be made as we work through the ordinance and implement it. And in that vein, when I sent that out, Dan Olson from the staff did take a look at Chapter Five and Chapter Four, and he did send me some, again, tweaks, corrections, that I did implement and send back. And then he also noticed in Chapter Four that the old sign code hadn't been deleted out of there. So that took an additional 16 pages out of your code, to bring you to a grand total of 101 pages fewer in this code versus the prior code. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but what you have before you is an ordinance for second reading and adoption. And then if the council does that, there is a summary resolution to adopt, to have language for publication.
All right. Any questions for Troy? Comments? Go ahead, Nancy.
Just again, to thank you and all the volunteers and staff who worked so hard to reduce the size, and I did this last time, but can you please hold that up so people can see what it was?
So it's this minus 101 pages.
Yeah, that's great.
And, of course, better formatted and more consistent throughout. So it should be a more user-friendly document for everyone.
And it's going online, or is it online now, the current, what the reading is online, that if people want to see it?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council member. So I, I'm not sure the, the corrections to four and five have been posted yet.
They have.
But it will be soon. And so, yes, kind of the one-up to that is online. And obviously, we'll be working to get, to get the, the updated four and five on there as well.
Thanks again.
Yep, thank you. It still blows my mind that we had citizens come and volunteer for that task force. And it'd be the impetus of most of the changes. It wasn't this council, it was, it was citizens that came in for this task force. And, and they read that thing and came up with subs. It's true, it's true.
And debated it.
And debated.
And it wasn't just a matter of reading. I mean, they had good discussions throughout the process.
Anyway, we're lucky, we're lucky to have them. All right. Looking for a motion on the final adoption?
Final, final.
Oga.
All right, I'll make this motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance adopting the recodification of the Crystal City Code.
All right, looking for a second? Brendan?
I second that motion.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, for the publication, looking for a motion?
I'll just continue, yes, indeed, there's more. I make a motion to approve the resolution approving summary language for the publication of ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash zero five.
All right, thank you. Brendan?
I second that motion.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. There should be horns blowing.
I'm just looking at the screen to see if there was a big like sigh.
Yeah.
There was.
There was.
You should follow him, make sure he doesn't go to the bar afterwards.
You should go with.
All right. I think the last item on our regular agenda, the council will consider memorandum of understanding with the International Union of Operating Engineers for Local Forty-Nine. We have our Assistant City Manager and Human Resource Manager, Kim Terrace, here to talk to the council on that. Welcome, Kim.
Last, but certainly not least, we do have our Public Works contract, our memorandum of understanding, before you tonight. And as you know, we entered a two-year agreement with Local Forty-Nine, our Public Works employees, for two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty. In two thousand, the contract does have a reopener for the sole purpose of negotiating the two thousand and twenty contribution towards health insurance premiums. This is similar to all of the other settlements that have been reached with our other unions, including the two police and non-represented employees. It does call for increases on both the employer and the employee's side of things, and we do recommend approval. It was signed and approved by the union members, and it is, there are sufficient funds in the proposed budget as well as all of your proposed alternatives. So we do recommend approval.
All right. Thank you, Kim. Are there any questions? Questions only at this time on this item? Seeing none? Looking for a motion? Brendan?
Make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local Forty-Nine. Yes.
Okay.
Did I write?
Yeah, that's fine, that's great. Okay. Nancy?
Second.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Kim. All right, we have a couple of things going on, some announcements. We must have announcements. Crystal Sparkles Holiday Lighting Contest nomination deadlines are December twelfth. That's Thursday, December twelfth for nominations. And forms are available at the Crystal Community Center and on our website. Crystal Business Association will be meeting December eighteenth at eleven thirty a.m. at the Pizza Ranch. I like that time better. Do you think we can make that permanent? Probably not. City offices will be closed December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth in observation of Christmas Eve and Christmas Day holiday. And then the next city council meeting is Tuesday, December seventeen, at seven p.m. in the council chambers at City Hall. Local organizations are invited to come and lead the pledge of allegiance or do a flag ceremony at the city council meeting. Please contact staff if your organization is interested. A reminder to all that the work sessions and the council meetings are open to the public. You're welcome to come and observe. And then you can also watch or listen on our website, crystalmn.co. Julie?
Well, there's a couple more too that I just thought about was, one of them, December ninth, Monday, from five to eight at Pizza Ranch, anything you eat there or purchase, a portion of the proceeds will go to the West Metro Fire Relief Organization. It's kind of a little fundraiser forum. And then also, I don't, is it, is it Winter Fest coming up Saturday?
Yep.
Thank you, Julie.
Yep.
It's like, what, ten to noon?
Ten to noon.
At the Crystal Community Center, and that is a really, really kind of fun, family activity, friendly, and it's free.
Yep. It's, it's two hours, so don't miss it.
Yeah.
You gotta plan for it.
Santa comes. On the fire truck.
Yep.
Yeah. And there's chances for photographs, and there's some dance contests earlier before that.
I have to work, but I always enjoy that, that's such a nice.
Are the animals coming this year?
I don't know.
Don't know? Farm animals.
But the horses will, right, with the wagon, maybe?
Yeah.
No petting zoo this year?
I don't know.
I don't know. Maybe, depends on the snow.
I guess I have to pick my words better because Brendan can't contain himself. Oh, no, just laughing about the petting zoo. All right. Yeah, I believe the hayrides are happening.
Okay, good.
Okay. Looking for a motion? Oga?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.